Well, here we are again on a Wednesday night. Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to have you with us tonight as we continue in our Advent journey. We, uh, we, we tonight are doing like the third lesson in this four-week study. And then we'll take a couple of weeks off, and I haven't decided yet what I will do following Christmas, uh, as far as the study. Um, Wednesday nights are gonna pick back up hopefully at church. We are hoping that we'll be able to eat indoors with Community Cafe on Wednesday night. We don't know yet with this Omicron variant picking up steam. Uh, it's, it's hard to forecast what we'll be doing as far as eating indoors at church, but we hope that, uh, kind of the tentative plan right now is January 5th, the night we start back, it'll be to go. And then on January 12th, the following week, it will be indoors with, uh, sitting around tables and chatting and learning about some of the classes and small groups that'll be offered. And listening to people tell us what they'd like to see in the way of a study. So we'll, we're gonna keep our options open until we've heard from people on that night. If, uh, if the number of COVID cases, uh, doesn't allow us to eat indoors, then we'll figure out how to do this thing to go only. But boy, I hope we can get back to indoor. Uh, I heard today that we were able to make some hospital visits from the church. We've been, uh, having to make phone calls and do things other than getting inside the hospital, but uh, three of the hospitals are allowing us to make visits now, which is also good progress. I'm back at home for my session tonight. Uh, last week was a little hectic with, uh, had to change the time to six and then run to rehearsal for, uh, one of us. That Christmas musical presentation was this past Sunday and had really good attendance for that. We have between four and 500 people in the sanctuary for that. It was so good to, to get to do that. Uh, this Thursday night, tomorrow night, the Metropolitan Bells, a community handbell group that is really good, will be, uh, doing a Christmas concert at Christ Church. Some of you know that Gary Bynum, uh, at Christ Church directs the Met Bells and, and, uh, I mentioned this last week, Carol Millard, uh, my wife Becky Sherry Shaver, there's a number of the ringers are actually part of Christ Church. So 7:30 tomorrow night, we will have four Christmas Eve candlelight services this year, uh, two in the commons, two in the sanctuary, 3 o'clock and 5 o'clock. You've probably heard this before, the ones in the sanctuary will be, uh, identical services. We'll have the choir, we'll have, uh, some orchestra pieces and, uh, ensembles and handbells and lots of good Christmas music at 3 o'clock in the commons. And we call it the family service and, uh, we can't do the nativity up on the stage like we typically do, but we've got parts for children to act out and to, to participate in telling the Christmas story. And then at 5, that'll be kind of an acoustic service. Beautiful music and singing, and then all four of the services will end with, uh, singing Silent Night in candlelight. So plan to come to one of those on Christmas Eve. Uh, one piece of news I don't think you've heard yet. Uh, on the Sunday after Christmas, which is December 26th, the day right after Christmas, we will, uh, we will have one service at 10 o'clock in the sanctuary. Uh, we'll have nurseries, but we won't have children's, uh, church like Power Up and Christ Town. So kids can come in the sanctuary and worship with us together. And then we're gonna do the same thing on January 2nd, the Sunday after New Year's Day. So plan to come for those. I think those, it'll be nice to have everybody all together and especially doing it as, as families. And then on January 9th, we'll be back to our three services and Nathan will be starting a new sermon series. Okay, I mentioned as I was just getting started, this is our third Wednesday in this Advent study. We started out looking at the prophets, uh, writings of the prophets in the Old Testament and how even while they were warning people about the, uh, the punishment that they were gonna face if they didn't turn back to God, there was also words of hope, and those words of hope oftentimes included the prophecy of the coming of, of a Messiah, a king, the Christ. And we studied some of those prophecies, Isaiah, Micah, Zechariah, Jeremiah. Last week, we studied about the birth of John the Baptist. Somebody tell me who John the Baptist's parents were? Father, mother, tell me a little something about them. If you've got their names, type those in as, as comments. As, uh, as I'm waiting for that request or question to get out to you, I'm, I'm, uh, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you that John's father was a priest and that John's mother was also of the tribe of Levi, uh, descendants of Aaron. And, uh, that was common that people married within their tribe. They did that to keep kind of the bloodlines pure. But this means that these are very righteous people. Zechariah being a priest and his, his wife, yes, Elizabeth and Zechariah. Thank you, Christie. Elizabeth, the mother, Zechariah, the father, and they were, they were elderly and, uh, to be having children had kind of given up and, uh, they get this beautiful promise of the coming of a, yes, thank you Lynn, you got it too, of, uh, the coming of a, of a child to them, and, uh, it was John the Baptist. Uh, John's role was to be the prophet, the one who prepared people for the coming of the Messiah. We talked about how there'd been this long period of silence without any prophets. And then boom, here comes John the Baptist baptizing people and also telling them there's one coming whose sandals I'm not worthy to tie. We skipped over Luke's version of the, uh, of the angel visiting Mary. Well, actually it only happens in Luke. We're gonna read some out of Luke tonight and some out of Matthew. An angel visits Joseph in Matthew, visits in, uh, Mary in Luke. And so we'll, we'll read that. I'm gonna do a lot of reading. I hope you've got your bibles handy. Uh, follow along with me if you do. Uh, I'm reading from the NIV. Uh, follow along in whatever that you have. If you notice uh, different wording or phrasing or something that seems to affect the meaning, be sure and, and post a comment about that. We'll kick it around a little bit. I'm reading Luke, chapter 1. I'm gonna read 26 to 33 to get us going here. In the sixth month, and that's kind of interesting, some translations don't say of Elizabeth's pregnancy. And you might wonder, well, the sixth month of what? But if it has just been talking about Elizabeth and the fact that she is expecting a baby. And so you can figure it out, but in the NIV, it says in the sixth month of Elizabeth's pregnancy, "God sent the angel Gabriel to Nazareth, a town in Galilee, to a virgin pledged to be married to a man named Joseph, a descendant of David." Let me look at my next question. And yeah, you'll, uh, you'll be telling me, be telling me what, what it means for Mary to be pledged to Joseph in their culture. The virgin's name was Mary. Excuse me. "The angel went to her and said, 'Greetings, you who are highly favored. The Lord is with you.'" Mary was greatly troubled at his words and wondered what kind of greeting this might be. "But the angel said to her, 'Do not be afraid, Mary. You have found favor with God. You will conceive and give birth to a son, and you are to call him Jesus. He will be great and will be called the Son of the Most High. The Lord God will give him the throne of his father David, and he will reign over Jacob's descendants forever. His kingdom will never end." Okay. Lynn's already jumped in here and says pledge means to be engaged. It's an arrangement. Yes. Both of those points, it's the closest thing in our culture. Closest thing we have is, is called engagement. Uh, it was more than that in their culture. It was, Michael is telling us, yes. Lynn says it was an arrangement. It was arranged by the parents. Oftentimes arrangements for marriages like that took place when, when children were small, especially when the girl was small. Uh, their culture was for guys to get married at older ages. For girls, they would, uh, they would be pledged, and I'm sorry, they would be, the marriage would be arranged all, oftentimes when they were just little girls. And then they would be pledged and married, uh, as soon as they came into puberty. So, the pledge ceremony actually had a, uh, had a legal ramification. Today in our culture, whenever a, a young man and woman become engaged, he gives her a ring, right? Those are becoming, uh, you've seen, uh, you've seen proposals take place at halftime on, uh, in, in football games. You've, people are starting to kind of make a, uh, an, uh, an event out of the, uh, out of the proposal and the giving of the ring. But that's a promise. The, uh, one asked the other, will you marry me? The other says, yes. Uh, it used to be in our culture that, uh, the groom-to-be would go to the bride's parents and ask for a blessing. Uh, let's see. It was often financial as well, an arrangement between the fathers of the bride and groom. Yes, there would be a bride price. Uh, the, the father of the bride would agree to pay a certain price. As a, I'm sorry, I said that backwards. The groom would, would pay a price set by the bride's father. Uh, it's like, okay, you have to give me 12 goats and maybe six sheep. And, uh, and so the, the groom would work and earn those animals and give them to the, to the family of the, of the bride. And this pledge ceremony was kind of the first half of the marriage ceremony. And in it, you became legally bound to one another. It's important to know that so that we can see why Joseph was in such a predicament whenever he learns that, that Mary is expecting a child. They are legally bound to one another. Uh, in their custom, you, you did the pledge ceremony, you became legally bound. And then you both went back to your homes. You didn't, uh, live together until the second part and final part of the marriage ceremony, which was the, the, the marriage itself, the wedding. Uh, this was a time, uh, where a bride and groom somewhat got to know one another, although that period was very, uh, very well supervised. But it was after the wedding ceremony that they would begin their life together as, uh, as husband and wife. Uh, something to keep in, in mind here, this tells us about Mary being up in, in Galilee. It's the northern province of Palestine. You've got Judea in the south and you've got Samaria. And then up to the north is Galilee. It was more laid back than Judea. Uh, Judea is where the temple is. It's where, uh, a lot of the priests live and do their work. And, uh, Galilee was more kind of cosmopolitan. There were, there were several highways that passed through. And so people in Galilee oftentimes were more exposed to people of other cultures, other countries. The Roman soldiers went through Galilee often, although they went to Judea as well. But, uh, Nazareth there in, in Galilee was a, was a small village, but it was located close to a major highway. Notice that the angel Gabriel, the same angel who appeared to Zechariah, says something to Mary. That, uh, that right away tells us, uh, well, it, it kind of kicks this whole thing off. "Mary, greetings. You are highly favored. The Lord is with you." Mary wondered what on earth the angel meant by that greeting. Now, what does that tell us about Mary? Here's Gabriel, an angel who, uh, represents God coming into her presence. And he says, "Mary, you are highly favored." And she has no idea what he means. What, what does that, what might that tell us about Mary? I think it tells us a couple of things. By the way, while I'm waiting for your comments, the reason Gabriel says, "Do not be afraid", the reason he says that is she's scared to death. He says that to Zechariah. You know, Zechariah was, was afraid. When, when angels come from God into our presence, I've never had that experience, but it must be a scary thing. Next week, we'll, we'll read the Christmas story. And, uh, angels say the same thing to her. Uh, I'm sorry, to them. Christie says she was accepting even though she doesn't understand. Uh, Michael says humble. Yes. Mary is going to be accepting, but she's got some questions first. She's very down to earth. She's very unprepared for this. Nothing has happened in her life to tell her someday an angel's gonna visit you and this is gonna happen. And that she's, she's learning all this for the first time. And, uh, she did not think of herself as highly favored. She is humble. There's some people that I guess if the angel visited them and said, "You're highly favored," would say, well, yeah. But not Mary. She's, she's like, what? Me? What's, what's so special about me? She's an ordinary girl. She lives in a poor family. She's in a small town. She's far from the powerful, the wealthy, uh, and those who would, uh, who, who might have, come closer to expecting something like this to happen to him, to her. Put yourself in the, in this little girl's place. She's, she may have been 12, 13, 14 years old. Uh, I'm gonna read verses 31 and 30 through 33 again. The angel says, "You will conceive and give birth to a son, and you're to call him Jesus. He will be great and will be called the Son of the Most High. The Lord God will give him the throne of his father David, and he will reign over Jacob's descendants forever. His kingdom will never end." Out of all that, what do you think Mary heard? You know, that's a bunch. You're gonna name him Jesus. He's gonna reign over the house of David. He's a descendant of, uh, he's a descendant of, uh, Jacob. Oh my goodness, he's gonna have a throne. What, what, out of all that, what do you think Mary really heard? I'm guessing. We don't know for sure. Yes, you're having a baby. All of that other stuff would have been wah, 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 because she's thinking, what? How can this be? She's gonna ask that question. You are having a baby. You will give birth to a son. Gabriel might have broken this down into, so do what? Yes. Uh, exactly. She's a virgin and she, she's aware that, uh, virgins don't have, get pregnant and have babies. And so she's mystified by this. Uh, but Gabriel had told her a bunch of other stuff. He'll be God's son. Oh my goodness. Uh, it's, it's hard to imagine hearing all this. He will be a king. Wow. I don't know if she even heard that part since she no doubt would have focused on this part about you're gonna have a baby. But this is a, a phenomenal amount that Gabriel has uttered to her in those three verses. That would, would have been a blur. And, uh, we, we know that from her next words. Let me read 34 through 38. Out of all the stuff he says, she doesn't say, so tell me more about this king. Uh, tell me about his throne or how he'll, she says, "How will this be?" Mary asked the angel, "Since I am a virgin." The angel answered, "The Holy Spirit will come on you, and the power of the Most High will overshadow you. So the Holy One to be born will be called the Son of God. Even Elizabeth, your relative, is going to have a child in her old age, and she who is said to be unable to conceive is in her sixth month. For no word from God will ever fail. I am the Lord's servant," Mary answered, "May your word to me be fulfilled." Then the angel left her. Oh wow. You see her next question, the very thing that she wants to know about is how on earth can I have a baby? I am a virgin. I'm not married. Zechariah had asked a similar question, but it was different. Remember when Zechariah, Zechariah had gone into the holy place to burn the incense in the temple and was, uh, was praying. More than likely, he was praying for a child. If not at that moment, he had been praying before because Gabriel told him, "Your prayer is answered." And Gabriel answered in a way that was like, well, that can't be. Elizabeth is too old. Uh, I'm praying for something that's impossible. Now you're telling me it's gonna happen. Zechariah kind of goofed up. His response showed a lack of faith. Mary's answer is somewhat similar to that, her, her response, but it's different. Mary had not prayed for a baby as far as we know. Mary is not at this point, uh, expecting any kind of news like this and then bam, it hits her. This came totally out of the blue for her. Mary is kind of focused on the fact that what Gabriel is telling her seems impossible. And Lynn says, she finds it so remarkable that almost immediately she believed and accepted it. And that's supposed to hit us just that way. Christie mentioned that early on, that Mary heard all this stuff and while she was surprised and shocked actually, while she wondered about how this is gonna happen, when it was explained, she accepted it. Mary went from, from questioning, uh, wanting more information to being very accepting very quickly. That, by her words, "I am the Lord's servant. May your word to me be fulfilled." There is a lesson there for all of us. May your, "I am the Lord's servant." If, if whenever we're challenged or asked to do something in ministry and service, uh, if we could just say, "I'm your servant, Lord." So it's, it's like, uh, Isaiah saying, saying, "Send me." Who will go? Send me. Mary is, uh, Mary's ready. Now, I'm gonna read on verse 39 through 45. "At that time, Mary got ready and hurried to a town in the hill country of Judea." Now, she's going down south, uh, to, to where Mary is, where she entered Zechariah's home and greeted Elizabeth. "When Elizabeth heard Mary's greeting, the baby leaped in her womb, and Elizabeth was filled with the Holy Spirit. In a loud voice, she exclaimed, 'Blessed are you among women, and blessed is the child you will bear. But why am I so favored that the mother of my Lord should come to me? As soon as the sound of your greeting reached my ears, the baby in my womb leaped for joy. Blessed is she who has believed that the Lord would fulfill his promises to her." Elizabeth was old. She probably could use some help. Uh, Mary's, uh, uh, Mary's, um, healthy and, and young. And so I'm sure she was really pleased to have her relative Mary come to help her. But I think there's another reason why Mary headed down south. Uh, why else might Mary leave Nazareth and go down to the hill country of Judea to visit her, her cousin Elizabeth? Can you think of some other reasons why that might have, uh, why she might have done that? Oh yeah. Uh, gossip, Christie says. I bet you that the Twitter feeds and the Facebook, timelines and all this stuff would have been lit up if they'd had those things then. But people were talking over the clotheslines. Did you hear what's happened with Mary? Did you know she's pregnant? Uh, and she and Joseph aren't even married yet. Uh, she was, uh, she wants to get out of town, I think. She wants to be away from the hubbub. I don't know if her parents knew about it at this time or if maybe it's a way to hide this from her parents for a while. But, uh, there's this grace for Mary. It's one thing for her to know that she's gonna, that she has conceived by the Holy Spirit. But it's a whole nother thing for you to tell people that and to have them believe you. Interesting that Elizabeth calls Mary the mother of her Lord. She calls her blessed because she is about to give birth and she's blessed because she has believed what God has promised. Wait, I think we mentioned this earlier when we were talking about John the Baptist. But here John, as a, as a baby in his mother's womb, uh, six months, uh, along leaps, uh, whenever his Lord comes into his presence in his own mother's womb. Let's read on, 46 through 56. This is, uh, this is one of those songs of praise that be thinking about what, what makes you just want to high-five people and dance a jig and celebrate and be happy? Notice what has made Mary happy. I'm gonna read a whole bunch of this, about 10 verses, 11 verses through 56. "And Mary said, 'My soul glorifies the Lord, and my spirit rejoices in God, my Savior, for he has been mindful of the humble state of his servant. From now on, all generations will call me blessed, for the Mighty One has done great things for me. Holy is his name. His mercy extends to those who fear him from generation to generation. He has performed mighty deeds with his arm. He has scattered those who are proud in their inmost thoughts. He has brought down rulers from their thrones, but has lifted up the humble. He has filled the hungry with good things, but has sent the rich away empty. He has helped his servant Israel, remembering to be merciful, to Abraham and his descendants forever, just as he promised our ancestors.'" End quotation, end of her song. And then it says, "Mary stayed with Elizabeth for about three months and then returned home." She would have stayed until about the time that John the Baptist was born, and then it was time for her to return home. This is called the Magnificat. It's, uh, that's a, from the Latin word for magnifies. My soul magnifies the Lord. So what kind of good news would make you giddy? Would make you shout or jump or, or, uh, throw your hat into the air to celebrate, to high-five people? To run up to your friend and say, "You're not gonna believe what just happened." What kind of things would, would happen to you that would make you do that? One thing that comes to my mind is good test results. You know, you go to the doctor, the doctor says, "Hmm, this, this doesn't look normal. And we're gonna run a, we're gonna run a special test. And, uh, let's draw some more blood or whatever." And, uh, and the doctor says, "You know, this could be," and throws out some scary thing. And then when we finally get the results and they're negative, everything is good. Oh man, that's cause for celebration. I help, uh, I help kids sometimes with homework in our lead program on Wednesday nights and, uh, and good test results. Oh, and that says if COVID disappeared, absolutely. When that happens, we're, we're gonna be high-fiving. Ah, somebody said, "Become a father." Tennessee wins the SEC. Oh my goodness. Now, that would be a miracle, John. Lynn says, uh, with Elizabeth having been born to become a mother, that was a miracle. Absolutely. If, if we take all those things, even Tennessee winning the SEC, as great as that would be, and we just multiply that and multiply it and multiply those feelings, that's where Mary was. Mary was, she realizes, oh my goodness, I'm this poor peasant girl and God has so blessed me. She's probably still, uh, a bit fearful, as Greg mentioned. But, uh, she knows she had been selected to be, uh, to do something so very special. So she's gone home just about the time John was born. And, uh, and meanwhile, back in the little town of Nazareth, up in Galilee, someone is waiting for Mary to come home. Who is that? Who's, who's stuck up in Nazareth? Waiting for, waiting for Mary to come back home? Might say her mother. Yes, she probably is, and her father. Uh, she may have brothers and sisters, more than likely did, but there's one person in particular. And I'm gonna flip back to Matthew and we're gonna, we're gonna read a little bit about that person who is waiting for her to come home. Oh yeah. Gala tells us it's Joseph and Christie. Yes, Joseph is there. He's learned somehow about Mary being pregnant, we don't know. But let's, let's do a little bit of reading, we, we do know that Joseph is a good man. We learned uh, that, that he is a carpenter. He's legally pledged to Mary. And uh, so let's, let's go back to Matthew, chapter one, and I'm going to, let's see. I'm going to read uh, starting at verse eighteen and let's see how far, yeah, I'm going to read through twenty-five. This is the Christmas story in Matthew, it's kind of funny how. We're able to take Matthew and Luke and put them together and we got the story. But uh, each of them tell about different things. In Matthew, he's just given us the genealogy of Jesus. And now we come to verse eighteen, he hasn't said a word about the birth. Other than who his father and mother were. And Jacob, the father of Joseph, the husband of Mary, and Mary was the mother of Jesus, who is called the Messiah. Then it mentions how those generations are fourteen in three different groups. And then at verse eighteen, this is how the birth of Jesus the Messiah came about. His mother Mary was pledged to be married to Joseph. But before they came together, she was found to be pregnant through the Holy Spirit. See how that connects, clicks with Luke's version? Although it doesn't tell us about the angel visiting her in Matthew. Because Joseph, her husband, was faithful to the law. And yet did not want to expose her to public disgrace. He had in mind to divorce her quietly. But after he had considered this, an angel of the Lord appeared to him in a dream and said, Joseph, son of David. Do not be afraid to take Mary home as your wife. Because what is conceived in her is from the Holy Spirit. She will give birth to a son. And you are to give him the name Jesus, because he will save his people from their sins. All this took place to fulfill what the Lord had said through the prophet. The virgin will conceive and give birth to a son. And they will call him Emmanuel, which means God with us, that's from Isaiah, we read that, Isaiah seven fourteen. When Joseph woke up, he did what the angel of the Lord had commanded him and took Mary home as his wife. But he did not consummate their marriage until she gave birth to a son. And he gave him the name Jesus. Now, uh. Joseph is going to, I'm sorry, uh, Matthew is going to tell us that Jesus was born. In Bethlehem, in fact, he's going to have, he'll tell us the story of the wise men, the maji coming to visit. The baby and, and to worship him. But Matthew doesn't tell us that Joseph started out in Nazareth, we get that from Luke. Again, we have to sort of put these parts together. We don't uh, we don't know. How Joseph learned that Mary was pregnant, I've always wondered about that. It wasn't like couples went out on dates and uh, you know, and had a lot of private time with one another. Uh, she would have been chaperoned anytime she was with Joseph. Uh, between this pledge uh, service and their wedding. He may have heard the gossip, you know, people would have, would have run to him with the story, you know, Mary's pregnant. Mary's parents may have come to him and broken the news. They may have offered to let him out of the, uh, out of the ceremony, out of the legal uh bond. They may have suspected that Joseph was the father. A lot of people would have thought that. He may have seen her and realized she was pregnant, but now he had a choice to make. One, he can publicly disgrace her and basically call her out. Uh, divorce her in a way that, in fact, she could be stoned for this. After being pledged. Uh, if, if this baby is by a human being, she could be stoned for that. And Joseph wants to do what's, what's, he's a righteous person, so he wants to do what the law says you should do. The law says you should put her away, you should divorce her and you could have her stoned. If you so desired. But he also is a decent person who doesn't want to see her humiliated. And so he says, well, I, I get a, I quietly go about getting a divorce to break that legal bond between us. As so often happens in our lives, God does something here. God gives Joseph an option he wasn't even thinking about. Joseph knew this wasn't his child. And so he wasn't considering. Taking her as his wife, am I going to divorce her publicly or, or quietly, privately? He decided the, the noble thing to do, which was to divorce her quietly. But now God is, God so often does, says, well, there's another option, take her home as your wife. The baby that she has conceived was conceived by the Holy Spirit, she is, she's pure, she's still a virgin. Joseph, and so you can take her home. Joseph did that, he believed Gabriel, he took her, her home, had no union with her until the birth. And then it says, Jesus was born and Joseph named him Jesus, boom, there's no manger in Matthew's version. Uh, there's no shepherds out on a hill, that, he just kind of cuts right to the chase. He, we will have the wise men coming to visit after the birth. But I want to ask you something. Joseph has been told, take her home, which also says, be the father of this baby, be the father of this child. What does that include? When the angel told him, take her as your wife. Treat this child as your own. Naming him. When the angel says, you are to name him Jesus. And Joseph comes along and names this baby Jesus. He is assuming the role of the human father. What does, what does assuming that role entail? What does this mean for Joseph besides, okay, um, I'm going to believe this. Okay, he's going to be the father of the Messiah, oh my goodness. This, he, he's, he and Mary are going to think about this, they're going to have trouble figuring it out when he's twelve and at the temple. It's like, what? This is the Christ providing an upbringing, yes, a huge responsibility, Lynn says. This means he's going to, he's going to work and earn a living to support this child. He's going to provide lodging and food and clothing. Boys in that time got a certain amount of education, Joseph will pay for that. He's, he will be the one raising him. He will be the one saying, no, no, don't do that, wait a second, here's something you should do. All the responsibility for a male child in their culture, that's exactly right, he's taking on all of that. One of the things that you, that fathers did with male children was to teach them a trade. Most often, the trade that they earned their own living from, if you were a farmer, you taught your sons to be farmers. My dad tried his best to teach us to be, to be farmers, none of us grew up to be farmers, but in their culture. Sons oftentimes followed in their father's footstep. We know that Joseph was a carpenter, later on, people will say, isn't this the carpenter's son? But in some places, they say, isn't this the carpenter? Jesus became, whatever that word, a worker of wood or a worker with one's hands, whatever that was. Carpenter, woodworker, whatever it was. He's going to teach Jesus that, imagine the time they would have spent in the shop. Working or on a job, building a, a building or whatever. Joseph has taken on a ton of responsibility, but as Annette said, he also gets to be the father of the Messiah. Uh, Joseph, we, we know is a. A very honorable person, a person who tried to do the right thing. And I'm guessing that one other thing, by Joseph taking Jesus, first Mary. Into his home and now raising Jesus as his own son. He gave Jesus respectability as a human being. Think what that would have been like if Joseph had said no and put Mary away, so. Uh, it just occurred to me this week, he, he probably gave Jesus respectability. Perhaps at the cost of his own respectability. Most of those friends and neighbors and maybe even some family members would have said, oh, that has to be his son. Don't think for a minute that everybody in Nazareth went around saying, oh, Mary conceived by the Holy Spirit and this, this child is uh. This child is God's son, a lot of people never accepted that, eventually some did. But I'm guessing that uh, yes, he legitimized him. And whenever he did that, he probably made a lot of people think, ah, okay, so that really was Joseph's son. Joseph and Mary sinned before their wedding. If, if that was the case, Joseph was willing to pay that price. We don't know a whole lot else about Joseph, but he's a good character. Uh, preached a sermon that uh, uh, a few, uh. I guess it was a couple of years ago, right after Christmas and used Joseph as, as my, my main character of that sermon. Well folks, we are uh, we, we are finished with our third study tonight. Uh, next week we'll do the fourth and then it, we're, you know what we're going to do, we're going to read the Christmas story. We'll uh, we'll read about the birth itself and the shepherds and the wise men. And uh, we'll kind of again, uh, use Luke and Matthew. God bless you all, have a good night's rest and uh, and uh, take time during this Advent season to really soak in what it means to. To have uh, the son of God coming and being born among us as one of us, good night.